Good evening, everybody, and welcome. This is the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council. It's 6:00 PM on Thursday, August 7th, 2025. We begin each of our meetings with a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance to the flag tonight. I'd like us to be led by Councilperson Amanda Thompson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everybody to turn their cellphones out. That's my dad. All right. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Councilperson Azar.
Present.
Councilperson Bowland.
Present.
Councilperson Chalos. Councilperson Devon. Councilperson Dinkle.
Present.
Councilperson Hinton.
Present.
Councilperson Laudamil. Councilperson Nation.
Here.
Councilperson Thompson.
Here.
Six are present, three are absent.
Sorry, I'm a little slow on the draw tonight. The absences of the three councilpersons who are not here are not unexpected. All three of them reached out for various reasons and sent their apologies. We always start this meeting with up to 30 minutes of time for public comment on non-agenda items. When you came in, there was a sign-up sheet. We won't confine it to only people who have signed up, but we will start with those folks. First on the list is Fred Harlan. Welcome, Fred.
Thank you. This is the first time I've ever done anything like this, so bear with me.
Sure.
I'm Fred Harlan. I'm from the cottages over on Wallace, just west of Fruit Ridge. And it's a lovely, pretty community. It's relatively new, so there's not a lot of work that's been needed and done on it. But some things were put in wrong, so the city wouldn't take us over. Sidewalks, streets aren't wide enough. Some of the sidewalks are not right. So we're responsible for all the expenses, but we still pay full taxes. So I was wondering if there's any kind of monetary assistance available or some kind of help or reduced taxes. I don't expect reduced taxes, but any kind of help that might be available to, like, we need to seal the roads. Is there money available for like that? Our ditch over there that runs the full length of the road, we do a lot of maintenance on that, and we keep it looking really nice. And I feel like our community, we pay a lot of taxes, and the city doesn't have to do anything much in return. I've seen one cop car in our neighborhood since I've been there, but it's because there's no crime. You know, they don't need to come in there. And we don't have any ambulances or problems very often, except when somebody needs assistance. So you guys, I mean, the city doesn't have to spend a lot of money on our community. I feel like if every community was as pretty and neat as ours and paid as much taxes as ours, this city would be probably one of the richest towns in Indiana. But we spend a lot of money on the ditch. I don't know how much of the ditch belongs to the city, but we don't even check into that. So I'd like to, if there's any way I could find out how much the city might be responsible for upkeep of some of the ditch, or if there's anything they could help us on, because we take care of our own streetlights, streets, curbs, sidewalks, and everything, you know, we foot the bill for all that. So my question is, is there anything available to help us on that? I personally pay $1,600 a year. If you take that times the 52 units that are out there, that's $83,200 that we pay. And I'm glad, and I'm glad we're able to help, and I'm glad we're able to make the city look better, because our community looks so nice. And we keep it that way, and we're going to keep it that way, no matter what. But if there was any assistance that could come from the city, I'd like to know what it is, if you could let me know. I don't know how to go about after that, you know, what to do from there.
Thank you, Fred. You are not the first person who's approached the council with this kind of problem. We've talked about this as recently as earlier this year, I think, with a different community. I don't think that it was the same, I don't think it was the cottages. Fred, who's the, who developed your community?
Well, it started out, it was one guy that ended up going bankrupt. I can't think of his name. Mark Tar, maybe? Does that sound familiar?
Yeah.
And then Anderson took it over and finished it all. He's the one that put the sidewalks in wrong in Phase 3. I've only been there six years. I don't know why they didn't make it right, but they didn't do that, so that's water under the bridge.
And, well, Marcus, I see you standing up. You're probably anticipating that we're going to call you up. Will you please approach the microphone and talk to us about this?
You done with me?
Yeah, for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Marcus, you are probably aware of the situation.
I am aware of this, and I worked with the developer about the sidewalk issues years ago. And the reason we couldn't get anywhere on this one, this one is a little bit of a different scenario. This roadway was platted as a private road in a private subdivision, so it was never intended by a developer in either the first or second phase to be accepted by the city. We did try to work with them to make sure their stuff met our requirements, so that maybe someday it could be, if the property owner so wished. But we didn't make any headway, since it wasn't a city roadway. Their attorneys pushed pretty hard that it's a private roadway, it would meet private standards.
So what you're saying is that they will, that it's on them, and it's a private, it's private?
In this case, it is platted on the plat as a private roadway.
Mr. Harlan also mentioned drainage and ditch. Would that also be private, is it all?
I guess it depends on which ditch he's referring to. If it's the one there next to Wallace.
Yeah, the big ditch.
That probably falls in city's right-of-way. There may be some help the city could provide, but it wouldn't be to the level, it would be maintained to the level of our other ditches we maintain, which is probably, you know, rarely mowed. My gut feeling is it probably wouldn't be acceptable to them. It is property within a right-of-way. Generally, abutting property owners do maintain those, but we could talk a little bit about that one.
And that's, again, the ditch adjacent to Wallace Avenue.
And runs right on Wallace?
Yeah, all right. Any other insight for us, Marcus?
Not a whole lot. I'll get you my contact information. We can maybe turn around and talk a little more later about the ditch and see if there's any way we can work together on it.
Okay. What's your name?
Marcus Mauer.
Marcus Mauer? Oh, thank you.
So, Marcus, if it's replatted as a public roadway, is that possible?
That was one of the reasons we pushed for them to meet all of our standards early on, so that that was always an option. But the big issue here, the roadway generally meets, if I recall correctly on this, the cross slopes on the sidewalks were significantly more than either we or the ADA allowed. And it would probably require quite a bit of work to get it within our standards.
All right. So basically, the homeowners would need to come together as a group to try to fix the issues, to get it up to city code. And then as the homeowners try to replat that road and then that, that's really the only avenue to get it under city?
Yeah, I would say that's accurate.
Okay.
Do you understand that, Mr. Harlan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think Phase 3 voted against doing it. It's what the current HOA president there told me, said they all voted not, they didn't want their yards all tore out. So they all voted not, because that's where all the bad sidewalks are, is in Phase 3.
Yeah, we worked pretty closely with the neighborhood, probably about five, six years ago. Maybe it's been more than that. But we worked with them, tried to make sure they met our standards, and we just weren't successful.
Understand.
Mr. President?
Anybody else? Yes, Councilperson Hinton.
Oh, I'm good. Yeah.
I'm just wondering, because the scenario that was brought up earlier was with the developer who just left, and the city prematurely gave him, released him from the bond, and there's been no recourse for that particular subdivision. And now here is one that's considered private, and there's no recourse for them, except that they ante up their monies and make the decision to try to fix it. With the taxes that they are paying to the city and the other subdivision is paying, I don't know that it's, what can we do to fix this? I know it's in Chapter 10, the infamous Chapter 10, to make changes to the ordinance, but, you know, how do we prevent developers from creating these subdivisions without consideration for the folks who'll be paying taxes for a very long time? And they don't have, you know, probably don't get snow removal or any cleanup or anything like that, and they're just at the mercy of a developer who may or may not come in and do it. I don't know how we get to...
Can I add something real quick? I talked to the, Anderson's brother, he was helping him do all this work over by the meadows, they built all those buildings there. And they told, he said, the city approved the sidewalks the way they are right now, and then a new group came in and didn't approve it after they were already in. I don't know, it's hearsay, but that's what he told me. Surely the inspector wouldn't approve something like that over the course of...
It happened, it's happened in other subdivisions, that the city will approve it prior to its completion. And then there's no recourse for the city to make that developer finish, you know, put the right sidewalks in, or put the right streets in, or put mailboxes in, and turn it over to the city.
See, TV shows about corrupt inspectors, I hope that never happens.
Never, that would never, that would never happen.
So I can add here, we're talking about two entirely different scenarios.
Yes, I get it.
The one you're referring to would be the public subdivisions that would ultimately end up being public roads, and the bonds are held until those are, should be held until those are finished. I don't know what happened in the past on some of those. It was a little before my time. We are working on a new system to accept roadways like that, that's going to run through the City Works program and be able to track those better. That's the solution that we've came up with so far. In this case, since the roadway was platted public, we tried our best to make them put it in to meet all of the same needs as a public roadway, but there was some precedent there that, I guess the law didn't allow us to push them that hard. So we tried our best, we negotiated. I know there was several homeowners there I spoke with nearly on a daily basis for quite some time. We pushed as hard as we could, but in this event, the job was finished. It was done. The road was paved, the sidewalks may be a little too steep on the cross slope we're So the bond requisites were met, as in it was installed, but we couldn't, we couldn't continue to pursue the same standards that we required for public streets, because it was a private street.
I yield.
Marcus, you're part of bringing us, or you have been for the last year and a half and longer, bringing us numerous code revisions. Some of them we're going to be considering again tonight. Do you have any guidance on what changes to Chapter 10 might look like that would address some of these issues?
We're working on some ideas. I don't know if they're quite ready to share, but yes, we're trying to come up with some ideas, trying to come up with a way that we can run it through City Works to track it, but also kind of modify the code to allow us to track it and keep track better. A lot of these subdivisions we're talking about are, that aren't finished and don't have the bond in place, are 25 to 30 years old. And a lot of people change positions over time. There's been a lot of people in and out of here since then, and, you know, things get forgotten, things get lost. So we're trying, you know, our first step is, hey, let's build a system that doesn't have cracks for things to fall into. So we want to do that, and we also, I think there's some areas the code could be updated. We're trying to find out where the lines are drawn as far as what we can, how much we can differ from the air. It may require changing some area planning's process and changing things at the county as well. So it's, Chapter 10 gets complicated to change.
Yeah. And I know that you're restricted by state code, too, you know, there's been a reference made to that also. So anyway, Mr. Harlan, I know that this is probably not very satisfying to you, but, you know, you are not alone. These, there are a handful of these kinds of situations with subdivisions throughout the city that we're being made aware of and trying to figure out what to do about. Anybody else? Thank you, Marcus.
If anyone else can keep that from happening again, that's good, too.
Yeah, that's good.
Yes.
Well, and I applaud you for, you know, doing the thing that's so hard for people to do, which is to come and stand and speak publicly and to express what the problem is and make sure that we know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marcus. The next person on the list is Shep Pollan. Welcome back, Shep.
Thank you. My name's Shep Pollan. I live at 3715 Ohio Boulevard. I was here tonight, there was a couple items I just wanted to speak about. One, I realize now, I don't know whether I have to wait or not, but there were two proposals that we understood were pulled from the agenda tonight, but I see that they're still on the agenda, so I don't know whether I need to ask questions about them now or wait till they come up.
May I? Since they're on the agenda, and this is comment on non-agenda items, you can talk about them later, but the action that has been requested to be taken is a procedural action where they will just be withdrawn, and that's it, they go away.
Okay. Well, that's, you're answering, I guess, part of the question I was asking, because the way it was, we heard about this, or the way I heard, they were pulled from the agenda. And my question was, did that mean that the actual procedure was withdrawn, and is it now dead? Or is it something that still is going to linger and could be brought up again at another time, if the council doesn't vote on it and say no?
Well, let me just try to clarify. A request to withdraw a piece of business is the end. And if you had heard that it was dead, it's because the petitioner has formally made that request. We have not acted on it yet, though, and we will act on it tonight at this meeting.
Okay. Good.
George said it'll take about a minute, when we actually do it.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
The other thing that's not on the agenda that I wanted to bring up was, as I've stated the couple of times I've been here before, I'm a relatively newcomer to this area, and I'm beginning to learn my way around. And one of the things that I've learned, kind of through a forced, a forced whatever it was, earlier this year, when we went through what we were just talking about, it, the way it came up, it was kind of a surprise, and the way it all came to pass. And what I'm here right now to ask you as a concerned citizen, is consider maybe making, if it's not in place, because I've tried to read the way your ordinance is put together and the way the application processes are done, and how they go to the planning and the zoning commissions and different agencies like that. What I have not been able to find in anything that I can read is that when an application for like rezoning is actually put in, there's no way in there that the applicant is required, or the city required, to give notices to nearby residents or adjacent residents and property owners that there's going to be a change. And as I read through things, and I've gone to the state records and looked to see what they have, and in most everything they have, when you start dealing with rezoning, zoning applications, replating, changes, cause of use, variances, things like that, almost in every case, they're suggesting that there is a public hearing and that the neighbors or adjacent property owners be notified, so that they have a chance to attend the public hearing and learn what's going on. Earlier this year, when we went through this process with what you're going to be voting on tonight, I don't know of anyone that received any sort of a notice ahead of time to know that an application had been filed. It was quite a surprise, and as a result, people got really alarmed and didn't have a real good feeling about the way things were going. And I think it has to do with just probably lack of communication. And here we are today, in probably the best time of our lives or in the world, to be able to communicate with each other. We don't seem to be, still be trying to do that. And I'm just asking if it's possible to ask like this, could you, as a city in the process of doing things like this, where you're going to have some sort of changes that are noticeable, maybe major, not maybe minor, but whatever, where it's going to have an effect on the surrounding area, that the people around there be notified ahead of time and have a chance to participate? And that's what I wanted to do tonight. So I appreciate your time.
Mr. Pollan, that's a very reasonable request. Can somebody remind us of what the notices are? I think it's through area planning.
Area planning notifies adjacent properties by statute for any rezoning or variances. They also publish, as required by statute, a notice in the newspaper. I post a copy of that notice on our website at least two weeks prior to the meeting. I don't know the area planning posted. General ordinances, I always put in the newspaper prior to passage, at least 10 days per statute, and they're posted on the website. A vacating, which we have tonight, any abutting property owner is notified as well, as long as they're touching the area to be vacated. So we, so area planning does send out those notices, but I'm not familiar with the area. Are you, Mr. Wright?
Yeah.
So Shep, it's not city government that's doing this, it's actually area planning. But your point is well taken, that, you know, we, maybe we could do a better job of communicating. Anyway, Michael, thank you.
No, I, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Shep. The notice per statute goes to adjacent landowners, and then signage has to be placed on the property in a conspicuous location. So it does go out, I understand. If you live across the street, if you don't touch the property, you will not get a physical notice from area plan. If you do, that's what triggers that. The other requirements that Michelle laid out are pursuant to statute.
And, Mr. President, I always offer that they could be on my email distribution list to receive notices of the agendas and links to the website of everything upcoming.
There had been, you know, a few years ago, thoughts of maybe changing that, abutting landowners to maybe a half-mile radius or something like that. I think the, you know, per-unit cost of filing an application, how big that could get in terms of a mailing list, kind of priced that out of consideration, and there's been an effort, I know where they, if it's a big property, they put multiple signs on every corner. So they're trying to be conspicuous in the fact that there's been a rezoning application filed related to that property.
Okay. Thank you, Michael.
I don't mean to be argumentative about this, but I met a lot of people that I did not know before all of this happened, and a lot of those people lived in Edgewood Grove, and they were adjacent to that property, and not a one that I know of received any sort of a notice in any way that this was going to happen. And I know there's a couple here in the audience that might, could say they did or did not, but none of them that I ever talked to received any kind of a notice. So, and I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, and your point is well taken. As a councilperson who has, you know, rezoning requests in his district, I hear these kinds of concerns from neighbors about the inadequacy of our public notice process. And I think that, you know, for most just regular people, we're not reading the legal notices every day, we're not going to the city website to see what the city council's going to be talking about this month. That's a pretty narrow, niche interest. And it often, I guess I should speak for myself, I became interested in city government when things were proposed in my neighborhood that I disagreed with about 30 years ago. So anyway, that's when I started coming to meetings, I guess I should say. Councilperson Bowland?
Marcus, does the statute say the size of the signage? Would that make a difference? Because I know just the typical small signs that area planning uses right now, it's really easy to take those down when they mow, and then they don't get put back up again. And I mean, I've actually seen that happen. I wondered if...
I'm not super familiar with statute, don't.
If I may, the...
I knew she'd know.
The, your office, Mr. Akers, I believe, posts them, and they're pretty good size. Now, area planning posts subdivision, and they're small, but the rezoning are pretty, I don't know, what are they?
Two by three.
Two by three.
Two by three.
But I know that the subdivision signs are tiny.
And our staff is posting them, so it's not a developer that could potentially hide them or something like that.
But I wouldn't accuse anybody of that.
Yeah, well...
Legitimately could end up on the ground.
They are, they are going to end up somewhere conspicuous, visible. I think ours actually are big enough to have wood stakes driven in the ground, aren't they? Yeah, so they're a little bigger. It can be hard with big sites.
Sure.
Because there may be, even if there's more than one, if the site is really large, you know, people may see one sign and think, oh, this little piece right next to the sign rather than a large one.
All right. Thank you. Mr. President?
Councilperson Thompson?
And something, the members of area planning, when we get our packets, part of what they provide in the packet is an actual photograph of the notice posting. So as members of area planning, we do expect proof that notice was provided. But again, you know, sometimes things happen, but we at least are given some showing that there was notice.
Councilperson Thompson, is there, by any chance, like a list of, I've gotten postcards in the past that have been sent to adjacent property owners. Is there a list of who those adjacent property owners are, or whether postcards went out, and to whom, those kinds of things?
That information is not in the packets that we receive. We typically have a photograph of the physical notice posted on the piece of land.
Great. Okay, thank you. Anything else on this one? Would you like to contribute a little bit? Welcome back.
Hi, I know, thank you. Heidi Isaiah, I'm Edgewood Grove resident. I just want to go on the heel of what Shep was talking about. My husband and I did, in fact, receive a letter, albeit after the first city council meeting, so it had already gone through area planning, and then we received it late. The information on the letter was not accurate, the picture depicted was not proper. We had brought that to the attention when we were having these discussions. I know for a fact I brought it to Tammy and Curtis, and I think Anthony as well. And so, yes, they can say they sent it, it was after the fact, and it was not the correct information. On the signage, the signage they posted on that plot of property that we're talking about, that hopefully goes away, had the wrong time for this, for the meeting here. So they put the sign out, wrong time, put the letter out after the fact. That's all I want to say. In addition to... In addition to that, I was going to say this evening, thank you all for all that you had done. That was one of my primary reasons for coming this evening, to formally thank you for all of your time and your listening throughout all of these sessions.
Heidi. Heidi, if you don't mind, can you remember who that, or which unit of government that letter came from?
Area planning. I still have the letter. I'm happy to scan it in and email it. The dates are representative of after the city council, first city council meeting we met with you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right. Next on the list is Shannon Giles. Welcome back, Shannon.
Hey. Can I say I love the fact that you know me so well you say my name correctly? So, hey, everybody. Shannon Giles, manager of tobacco prevention and cessation here in Vigo County. Uh, we began a new grant year on July 1st. We've got some big plans and goals. We also started a new cigarette tax on July 1st, raising the price per pack of $2 and comparable percentages on all other tobacco products. Um, I am already getting a lot of feedback from healthcare folks in the area that they, their patients are asking for help with quitting. So, um, we're pretty thrilled that that seems to be already having an effect. Um, but that's not why I'm here. Um, I'm here tonight to share some key highlights from the recent Indiana youth tobacco survey. Um, you don't have to take any notes or write down any numbers I brought you. So every two years, Indiana surveys middle and high school students about tobacco use. Uh, this past survey, we didn't have any Vigo County schools in the current survey, but they are, do an excellent job of looking at a cross-section of students from, uh, around the state that are representative of metro and rural and, and, uh, all the demographics. So, um, the survey covers a range of topics, including use of cigarettes, e-cigarettes, cigars, smokeless tobacco, and other products, media and advertising, youth access, school curriculum, cessation attempts, secondhand smoke exposure, and marijuana use. The marijuana use is a new one. Um, some of the key findings. High school tobacco use dropped from 10.5% in 2022 to 5.8% in 2024. E-cigarette use also dropped significantly from 9.2% to 5%. Nicotine pouch use among high school students more than doubled from 2.3% to 5%. Poly use or use of multiple products dropped from 3.2% to 1.5%. Marijuana use among high schoolers decreased from 8.7% to 4.4%. Around 65% of middle schoolers and 53% of high schoolers strongly agreed that all tobacco products are dangerous. One in four students, at the time they took the survey, reported exposure to secondhand smoke in the past week. 70% of middle school tobacco users and about half of high school tobacco users had tried to quit within the past year. And most students reported seeing ads for cigarettes and e-cigarettes. While many of these trends are encouraging, there's still work to do. Tobacco and vape-free Vigo plans to implement prevention education for all sixth grade and ninth graders in the 2025-2026 school year. We are also launching a restorative class for students caught with tobacco in school. These will be three nights a month classes. Michelle, I broke it. We're talking too much. I'm sorry. I put this in ChatGPT a minute, three minutes. I promise. I'm sorry. Does it just cut me off at three minutes? Is that the way that, that's very special.
That's not a bad idea.
I'm at the very end. We're doing a restorative measures class, so three nights a week, every month from, through the entire school year, any students caught vaping or with tobacco products is going to have to come to a three-night class with a grown-up, which is the part I'm very excited about. Um, it will allow high schoolers to, uh, escape any jail time or, or a criminal record if they come and complete the class. Middle schoolers will get a time reduction from their suspension time. I'm happy to answer any questions, but we're pretty excited about what we got planned this year.
Thank you, Shannon. Anybody have any questions for Shannon?
Thank you. I didn't start until 2023, so I'm only taking half credit for this.
Keep up the good work. Thanks. Uh, last on the signup list is, uh, it looks like Steve McCarter. Are you here, Steve? McAllister, yeah.
Yeah, I was signing for.
It's on the agenda.
We'll see you on the agenda later on. Okay, um, is there anyone else who would like to address the council about, uh, an item that is not on our agenda tonight? Okay, hearing none, we'll keep moving. Corrections to the journal?
There are none.
Communication from the mayor?
There is, uh, he does not have one.
Reports from city officials?
There are none.
Reports from the Board of Public Works and Safety?
There are none.
Reports from standing committees?
I do not believe there is one.
Well, uh, Councilperson Boland is going to provide one.
It, it, not a recommendation, but do you have an update?
Just an update.
Okay.
It's just an update, not a recommendation. Yeah, it's just a, just a, thank you. So I just wanted to take a brief minute to discuss our Planning, Zoning, and Improvement Committee meeting that we held on July 28th. Uh, all the committee members were present, and, uh, most of the sponsors of the ordinance were also present. Public comments were not allowed at that meeting. We had said in the past we would not allow public comments. We did, uh, take some, um, questions and allowed some folks in the audience, who are kind of experts in, you know, what was being asked, uh, throughout the committee process to comment. We had Tommy Klechner here, Mayor Sacman spoke, and I think, um, City Attorney Mike Wright was also here to answer some questions for us. So I want to say we really, really appreciate the public, uh, participation in this process and those who attended the meeting, as well as the folks have been emailing and calling us with their comments. We have a second committee meeting scheduled on August 20th at 5:30, right here in this courtroom. Uh, at that meeting, we will allow public comments. I got an email today from, uh, a couple different neighborhoods that have said they have got together and are preparing their comments, as we suggested, so we can make efficient use of our time at this meeting. So again, uh, special thanks to all the folks on the council who have spent a lot of time looking into this and the public, and we want to continue to hear what your concerns are as we continue to work through this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson Boland. Reports from non-standing committee?
There are none.
Items previously tabled?
Resolution 13, 2025, approving a declaratory resolution, resolution declaring an area as an economic development area and approving an economic plan for Brickyard Estates and Paddock at the Park allocation area. You received a request to withdraw.
Do we have a motion on this one?
Mr. President.
Councilperson.
I move to rem, uh, withdraw Resolution 13, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Azar, seconded by Councilperson Boland, uh, that Resolution 13, 2025 be withdrawn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. It's withdrawn. I think that took less than a minute, Shep. Uh, next.
Resolution 14, 2025, approving an amendment to the declaratory resolution for Brickyard Estates and Paddock at the Park Economic Development Area and Economic Development Plan. Again, you received a request to withdraw.
President.
Councilperson Azar.
I move to withdraw Resolution 14, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Azar, seconded by Councilperson Boland, that we withdraw Resolution 14, 2025. All in favor of withdrawing, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Resolution 14 is withdrawn. Tax abatements for confirmation, Michelle.
There are none.
Items on second reading.
General Ordinance 3, 2025, admitting City Code, Chapter 7, Article 6, Property Maintenance Code. You do have a proposed amendment before you.
Thank you. Do we have a petitioner for General Ordinance number three? Welcome back, Marcus.
Thank you. Good evening, Marcus Meyer, City Engineer. So there's a little confusion over what all your copies. Michelle, can you, what, did you get them the copy that I'd gotten you? Okay, so we have taken some input from the previous meeting. I know there were some concerns over the warrant language, and we went ahead and just removed that because we don't intend to follow that. We aim to work with people and, and kind of go through processes that we have in place now. And we haven't seen a need for that with our current process, so, uh, we can just remove that language. We also made a really minor change, the 24-inch diameter at base tree. I went ahead and changed that to diameter at breast height because it's a more common tree term, and it's better defined. Thank you. And we also added, to make it more clear, there was some confusion over the cost of the tree permit. We added that $25 permit cost in there, so there's, there's not confusion. Um, I will add something to clarify from last time is that is only for trees that have been deemed hazardous, not all trees. And then there was also some concerns regarding, um, what happens in the case of a natural disaster or event or a hardship. And rather than adding something to that, and I apologize for not catching this and bringing it up last time, there is, that's on my phone, a section in there that does give, uh, kind of a hardship, so it's Section 1, 7171, subsection 3, um, subsection Roman numeral, lowercase Roman numerals 4. It's for approval of modifications, and essentially, I'll summarize it, it, it gives the building inspection official, in the event that there's a hardship or a good reason that something can't or shouldn't happen yet, the ability to, to modify some of the requirements, whether it be what the repair is or timeline. It, it doesn't put any restrictions on what they can modify, but generally, we would expect that to be, you know, how long it is in the event, Terry Towne was the example we used last time, that they had a lot of trees down. And rather than going up there and telling everyone they have a short period of time to clean up those trees, that's where we would look to that natural disaster or that hardship, and, and we could come up with a timeline that was a little more reason, reasonable. Um, another example would be if there was a lot of storm damage in a portion of the city or all of the city. We've had a few storms like that in, in the past few years. Contractor availability may be an issue, so that would give us the ability to modify. The key is, you know, the one thing we're not willing to modify is overall safety. If there's something that is truly a violation to risk of life or, or serious health, that, that would be something that we do need to stick with. So I think that covers all the changes that we've made regarding the previous code. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Marcus. Is there anyone in the public who would like to ask a question about General Ordinance number 3, 2025?
I have an motion.
Councilperson Boland.
Marcus, under hazardous trees, um, this talks about all properties within the corporate limits of the city of Terre Haute. Um, the property owner is solely responsible for removal of any tree that poses a hazard designated by the Authorized Enforcement Agency. Is that the city forester? Is that engineering department?
So.
Maybe it's in the description somewhere, but I.
I think it defines authorized, there it goes.
Okay.
So that's a vague term we use in the code so that it can be engineering or code enforcement or, you know, forester. It does define authorized enforcement agency in the definitions as any official who's charged with the administration enforcement of this code, which include, I'm summarizing, there's more to it than that, but includes city of Terre Haute Building Inspector and their designees and authorized members of the Terre Haute Police Fire Code Enforcement and Storm, or Stormwater Departments. So it, rather than pinning it and, you know, permanently forcing this code down one path, we wanted to leave some options open. You know, this has been used in codes in the past where we want to be able to meet the needs of this code to the, to the best extent we can. If, if we don't have the staff and there's other, other capable departments that also work in this, this line, that multiple departments could respond to something.
And I think probably one of the things, unless we've got a specific topic going on, but in general terms, that we get a lot of calls about are those trees in the tree.
Yeah, and this, this does not apply to those. Those are still a call 301, and the urban forester's going to come take a look, and if it's a hazard, uh, it would go on a list for the city to do this. And this code is referring only to private property.
All right. Just so when I get a call, I'll have an answer on that. I yield, thank you.
Who else?
Mr. President.
Councilperson Hinn.
Thank you. I have a couple, uh, just small edits, um, under, uh, anyway, just above purpose on Section 7, 1 dash 162, the D E, and in the same, and in another spot, Section 7 dash 166, and we're talking workmanlike and workmanship. Is there a gender-neutral term we could use? Like professional or artisanship or?
That's a great question.
Okay. Thank you.
We didn't, we didn't put that together, that was, uh.
I always do that very simple. The, the other thing is just, uh, under Section 7, 167 G, uh, the last sentence, "It shall be the responsibility of an owner to restore said surface to a state of maintenance and repair within 15 days." Within 15 days of what?
Um.
Notification?
Certain that would be notification, yeah.
Probably should finish that sentence. Defacement of property.
Yeah, I think that, if that sentence were all there, I would expect it to be within notification. Yeah, that, that is a little bit vague.
Should it, should it, after notice?
Notice.
Notice.
After notification, yeah, within 15 days of notice.
Of notice, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate those catches. Sometimes you look at these things, uh, so many times that a fresh set of eyes can be very helpful.
I yield.
I have a couple of questions.
Mr. Minister.
What do you consider, I, I'm reading under 7 dash 164, permit responsibility. What's considered an improvement to get an improvement permit? What do you consider an improvement? Is there, uh, putting new guttering on something an improvement? Putting a roof on an improvement? Do you need, do you need permits for all that, or is that?
So we define elsewhere in Chapter 7, everywhere you need permits. And that would be what this would go back to. Um, I don't have that in front of me.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking it over, hold on. Sorry, I missed that. Of course, it says improvement.
But generally, what I'll say is we require permits for structural, uh, weatherization-type stuff, the type of things that if something was missed, they would lead to an issue with the building. We do not require permits for paint, flooring, um, you know, things like that that don't change access routes or structural.
The general.
Issue, yeah.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry I missed that part. Okay, I yield. Why don't you, hold on. Since you have these changes that were suggested, would probably be the benefit to maybe, maybe table this until you correct it?
I didn't get a chance to write it down, so that's why I asked that.
To do what I hear?
It's fine with me to table it, or it's, it's just kind of minor.
I know it's minor, but it's still a change.
Yeah.
Right or not?
Uh, we would just need to clarify before you vote. I, I didn't get a chance to write everything down, I'm sorry.
So, oh, sorry.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Councilperson Thompson.
Um, Marcus, off the top of your head, is there another word that we could replace workmanship with, or workmanlike?
I, I looked it up today.
Oh, you got it?
I looked it up today. We can either use professional. We can either use professional, we could use artisanship. Say that word person.
Work quality, I don't know.
I was thinking quality of words, the phrase, maybe not a word, but a phrase.
We could have that on the floor, couldn't we?
I probably would want to take a, I would hate to just throw a word in there because it could potentially change some meaning significantly. You know, we're looking at getting this going, you know, ideally, January 1 is what we're thinking. We want to get it out there and get it passed, you know, before then, obviously, so that we can prepare and also notify the public of it and start working towards that. But, you know, if we need to make some modifications before next week.
I mean, even if we table it to next week.
I'd be on board with that, yeah.
I think I have notes, we're looking for the general neutral term for workmanship and workmanlike, and then within 15 days of notice on the end of 167G. Is there anything else that?
167G. One is, workmanlike, DD, under 161.
Yeah, there's a definition of it early on, and I think later in the chapter, there's a mention of it, too.
Yeah.
We can, we can turn those modifications around pretty quick, just want to, I'd like to take a minute to look at the term to make sure it doesn't change the meaning of anything, because sometimes it's real easy to say, yes, this is interchangeable, then you put it in the paragraph and you read it and maybe it means something else.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
So I've gotten several phone calls and emails about this, and I completely appreciate the need for this because it will help eliminate blight in our community and address a lot of the, you know, maintenance issues that we don't currently have any enforcement of. I mean, we get complaints all the time of, hey, my neighbor's not doing this, or this property is in disrepair and lacking this, we don't have really enforcement. The concern I'm hearing is that it's going to be punitive against people who are already disadvantaged. So I would hate to see us enact something that's just going to put fines on top of people who are already struggling to afford, you know, to make repairs on their home. Is there any funding mechanism that we are looking at, at providing assistance through the city for those who are under a minimum income threshold or something to help them get their, their properties back in order?
We don't have anything right now, but, you know, that's one of those things that we can work with on the hardships, to try to, you know, whether it's more time or more things. In the long run, the things that we're going to be looking at and the things we're going to be finding are things that are going to cause bigger issues, that are more expensive down the road. So the goal is to help try to catch things before they become so big that a house is condemned and ultimately torn down or required to be brought to current code, which is significantly more expensive and more devastating.
Yeah.
I understand your concern.
Your office, the entire city hall staff, I know, always go out of their way to help property owners. I have no doubts about that. Every time I've had an issue and I've sent it on, and your guys are great about that, so I don't have any doubts about your commitment to that. I just want to make sure that down the road, 20 years from now, when we're, these seats are occupied by different people and different people are in the engineer's office, that we're not, you know, creating a mechanism to unduly punish people who are already struggling to get by.
I understand. We don't have funding in place. You know what? It's hard to say down the road. We don't know what we're going to run into. Right now, we wouldn't have enough information to know what that funding would look like or how much we would need or who would be eligible. You know, our goal.
Well, I know a part of any major legislation like this is we don't always know what's going to happen. We don't always know the unintended consequence. Sometimes we just have to put it into practice and make sure we respond to those issues accordingly and make sure we're not creating that pressure on people.
And I think, you know, the key here is that we're looking for those minimum standards of living, that, you know, we're looking to ask to have things fixed that somebody shouldn't be living in currently, it's unsafe, unsanitary, and there is a risk for that person living there. So, you know, our alternative is to condemn the house. So if, you know, there is one issue that's not structural or not this or not that, this gives us the opportunity to say, if you fix this, you're good.
Because right now, it's basically nothing or condemn. And I've heard that problem time and time again, that, well, until we can condemn it, there's nothing we really do. We don't want homes to get to that point.
No.
We don't want to condemn homes. So I totally appreciate, you know, the purpose of this, and I think it will do a lot to give us something so we're not condemning homes left and right. We can address it before it gets to that point. Okay, thank you. I yield.
Mr. President. I just have one other question. Is this, this ordinance basically complaint-driven?
So it'll be mostly complaint-driven, but we do have staff that's out and about, and, you know, if they see something that's unsafe, it's their responsibility to make sure that things are safe. You know, we have building inspectors on the, on the street every day. Jason may be a better answer for this than me, because it's going to be his crews and they're out doing it, but we'll have both.
Jason, I'm the lead building inspector. So, yeah, we get, as you guys know, I mean, you guys send me emails, and we've talked to a lot of people about complaints and neighbors, and as we go out there and we look at one property, we see another one, right? So we can't turn a bond out if something we see that's, could pose a hazard. So we have to react to it. So we see homes with holes in roofs, trees leaning on them, we have to react to that in some fashion. So in our current code, we really don't have any action. If I have a home leaning, a tree leaning on a home, either I do nothing or I condemn it. We don't want to do nothing, and some properties I don't want to condemn, so we send a notification to the property owner, and we say, hey, you need to resolve this. That's where part of this hazardous tree comes into play, or if you have a hole in a roof that creates a fire hazard. So, yeah, it's both. It's a, it's a combination of, we get calls from the mayor's office, we get calls, emails from you guys, citizens, 311, fire department, police department, we get it from all directions. So it's not just one, one entity, someone just calling and complaining about their neighbor.
And the, I think I read here somewhere, I can't find it right now, about building inspector going into a home or whatever and giving them adequate notice, is that in here? Or did I not, did I?
There was an amendment, I think, to that language.
Is that, yeah.
About getting access, yeah, they removed that language.
Okay.
For the warrant, we removed the warrant, yes.
You removed the warrant, but it said something about a reasonable time to inspect, right? So does that mean you'll just contact someone and say, hey, we're, we need to inspect your property at such and such a time? You're not just going to go knock on their door and say, hey?
Yeah, no, I know, 100%. So we have different things we do now. We put door tags on, we have, we've sent certified letters.
Okay.
We do that. If we can find their phone numbers, sometimes we can track them down through different contacts. We do it that way, too. At worst case, we don't, if we keep getting no responses over the course of weeks or months, then we have to take different action.
Sure, I understand.
We make every effort to make contact first.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
On Counselor Dinkle's question about the fines, perhaps overburdening people that are already on a fixed income or low income, ultimately collecting any fines that are issued, that would still come before city court, right? So that would be an enforcement, so the judge, this sitting city court judge would be able to have some discretion. Someone's drawing disability, you know, they're only getting $700 a month, I would assume that that judge would probably grant some, some grace in that type of situation.
Yeah. So, you know, we have city court for ordinance violations, the first, or the first three Wednesdays of each month. And our driving theme in those is voluntary compliance is the cheapest course of action for people. So if we have people who are showing up in city court, the pictures are establishing that they're working to bring their property into compliance, we want to give them that same grace. If they're making good faith effort to show improvement, we give them time to follow through and complete that. If somebody is being non-responsive and ignoring, you know, the tickets that they've received that we have good service on, then in those instances, we are issuing a default judgment and issuing a fine based on that. But if people are actively engaging in the cleanup and maintenance of their property, they are not, a fine is not in their future. We do not look to that. We would rather see them spend that money cleaning up the property.
I yield.
Just one observation, and I don't know who to direct this to, but this is general ordinance 3 as amended. And I struggle when I look at amended versions of stuff that don't have underlines and strike throughs that make it clear to me what has been amended, what has, what's being proposed as a change.
That was me.
Oh, okay.
It was tricky, because normally, if you're amending an existing part of the city code, it says, but this is new.
Right.
So then I felt uncomfortable underlining it, and I asked them to come, you know, and be prepared to say.
We can distribute.
We can redo it.
The working file of this document, so you can see the changes.
Personally, that makes it easier for me to track the changes that are proposed and see how these, how this legislation like this evolves. And I get it, that this is new and, you know, it hasn't been proposed before, so it's a change to something that isn't actually on the books. I understand the distinction. But as somebody who's considering the legislation, I've got one version from last month, and then I've got this version from this month, and they, when they're faced, look exactly the same, except for one says adds amended. And I have to go fishing through, you know, all the documents and compare it to the old one. Anyway, it's not, thank you, Michelle, for that, and Michael, I would appreciate having that distributed, if you don't mind. Anybody else? Counselor.
I think I brought something up similar during our committee meeting last week, and it just tags on to Counselor Dinkle's comments around how to support people, and most, most of these properties will be low to moderate income people and homes and households. I know the funding is, is short, but the, one way that we, I know that the community development block grant is always dedicated in redevelopment specifically for sidewalks and roads and that sort of thing. But there ought to be some room in that CDBG where, or even in the casino money, where we could give forgivable loans up to 5, 10K for folks to rehab their properties. And if they rehab their properties and live in that house for the next 10 years, it's a forgivable loan. I think there are ways that we can, you know, get these houses, get these homes rehabbed, that people can stay in them, they own them, they've been paying mortgages on them, can't get equity loans probably because they don't have the income to do it. But there should be a way, this would never be a problem for me, that I would have to rehab my house, and I couldn't go out and get some kind of a loan to fix my house up or, you know, I had some good insurance where the wind blew my roof off and I was able to replace my roof. I could do it probably on my own or ask some of my relatives to pitch in and help me get it done. But for most of the property owners that this will impact will be people who are low income, low to moderate income folks, and we just should make provisions through either community development block grant or casino funding to, to help in that way. That's just, that, we don't have to do anything about that now, but it's something that we should put on the table for the future, when we're doing budget stuff.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Mr. President.
Counselor.
I move to table general ordinance 3 until, what's the next one?
14.
August 14.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Dinkle, second by Counselor Dinkle, that we table general ordinance 3 until Thursday, August 14. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, it's tabled. Thank you, guys. Next order of business, Michelle.
Appropriation 8, 2025, $967,224 from casino number 01800000 to principal on note number 0180000003439178 for $952,724 and to interest on note number 0180000003439179 for $14,500. You must vote to take action.
Good evening, Council. Jessica Thome, City Controller. With this appropriation, we're asking for approval to increase the principal and interest lines in the casino budget to pay off two public safety leases, one being the night vision goggles for the police department in the amount of $387,000, and the other being the 2025 police vehicles in the amount of $580,000. Our objective with the casino fund is to not only relieve public safety funds such as PS Lit and EMS, but also to spend conservatively while building a surplus. Paying off these two leases will eliminate recurring payments in the amount of about $165,000 per year in PS Lit. Just for a quick update, this year, the casino revenue has been quite healthy with, we have actually received revenue being about 6.7 million in total since last year, about 8.5 million. If this is approved tonight, we will have paid off about 1.9 million in public safety leases. We are also able to use some of these dollars on road paving, sidewalks, demolition, and even some set aside for building improvements for cemetery and the YMCA project. Again, we are focused on building a surplus in this fund, so we are spending as conservatively as possible while trying to make some much-needed improvements in various areas of the city. And I would also like to add that we will be coming back in October to request another additional appropriation to pay off two more public safety leases. This time, it'll be for the fire department. We would like to pay off their 2024 fire gear along with two of their engines, engine three and engine six. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Jessica, it's not about this particular appropriation that's before us, but you mentioned that you're going to bring one in October. Will that also be from casino?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who has a question about appropriation number 8, 2025? Counsel?
Jessica, just want to make sure I understood you right. 6.7 million this year.
Mm-hmm.
And 8.5 million total.
Total.
Since we started receiving casino revenue.
Yes. Thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. President. Counselor. Dinkle.
Jessica, I know you talked about that this would open up approximately 165K a year into PS Lit. Do we know what the savings would be by paying it off today versus letting the bond go?
I actually don't have that in front of me. I know we'd probably save significantly in interest, but I can get that information for you.
I mean, do you know how lo, how much longer we had on these?
Well, these just started.
That's what I was, thank you.
Yeah, so we have about five years, I believe.
So I would imagine the interest would be.
Yeah.
Quite a bit. Okay, thank you. I yield.
Anybody else? Mr. President. Counselor.
There's no further discussion. I move that we take action on appropriation 8, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved that we take action on appropriation 8, 2025. All in favor of taking action, say aye.
Aye.
Post, we can take action.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
I move that we approve appropriation 8, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Dinkle, second by Counselor Dinkle that we approve appropriation 8, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, it's approved. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Next order of business, please, Michelle.
General ordinance 4, 2025, amending city code, chapter 10. General ordinance four, twenty twenty-five, amending city code chapter ten, article four, division one, creating sections ten dash four hundred through ten dash four oh eight, rental property registration and inspections. You must vote to take action. Area planning gave a favorable recommendation.
Welcome back, Marcus.
Good evening, Marcus Meyer, city engineer. So this is, kind of goes hand in hand with the previous ordinance that we discussed, and it also covers a different property class that we also sometimes see those property maintenance issue with, and that's, that's the rental, the rental unit. So the goal of this ordinance really is to create a database of rental properties with good access for us to contact information, ownership, building type, building use, so that we can know that information, you know, partly for planning purposes, which is good to know. It can potentially help out emergency services as well and really allow us to also be able to enforce some of the rules like property maintenance and make sure that they get to the right person. Sometimes it can be difficult to find the owners of some of these rental properties. If we go search Beacon and look for who owns them, it could be an LLC with a PO box. And that's, one of the struggles that we have is being able to deal with some of these properties in a way, in a timely manner when we don't have a person to reach out to. So this would help with, you know, along really same general path as, as property maintenance, and we're looking to be able to create the same thing, but just be able to have a way to know who to contact and how to get ahold of them, but also to know that what's there and how it operates. So, you know, in the event there's an emergency or a problem, we can also deal with that. There's a lot that's not known about our rental community. We do know a high percentage of, of our, of our population is renters, and we get a lot of phone calls regarding the quality of those rentals. We have a lot of great landlords and great rental companies in town as well. The goal would be similar to property maintenance to make sure that these rental properties meet the, the safety, life safety, basic living standards that, that we want to see in, in all houses in Terre Haute. There is, you know, this one is, is going to be primarily complaint-based. There, you know, again, like Jason mentioned earlier, our inspectors are out there, but, you know, things on the interiors of homes are generally only seen by the people inside of them, so, and a lot of the calls we get are regarding that or, you know, maybe an HVAC system not working or something along those lines. So what we want to put together here is a way to make sure those are safe habitable homes. So the process would be, you know, if we see something that catches our attention, it would lead to an inspection, or if we get the complaint or the notification from somewhere, it would lead to an inspection. That first inspection, we're not charging. Other communities charge for every inspection. There's no charge. We would have inspection staff go out, do the inspection at no cost to the tenant or the landlord, and they're going to determine if it's safe and habitable, generally along the lines of what the property maintenance ordinance that we discussed would, same, same type of thing, safety. And in the event something is found, they would get a timeline to fix it. In the event that nothing's found, they would, they would pass. We would charge for failed inspections. There's also a clause in here that would allow us to inspect annually individuals who've had multiple major violations within a year and where we would expect to see more of those major violations, and, and there would be a cost with that one. But again, the ultimate goal is to just create safe, safe environment. So there's a five dollar annual fee for the registration of this. That triggers them to renew every year, make sure that their contact information and all of their information is up to date. There is a kind of a carve-out for multiple properties, so we define a rental unit community in here of five or more. If you have five or more, that would be one rental unit community, and that would be one, one application. So think of an apartment complex with thirty apartments, wouldn't be five times thirty, it would be five dollars. We're not trying to burden anyone here, we're just trying to create a safe environment. I think that's it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Marcus. Is there anyone in the public who would like to ask a question about general ordinance four, twenty twenty-five?
Hi, I'm Shelley Jenkins. I'm with the Flosse Terre Haute and JW Realty. I guess my question is, so you are not fined, so like if you come out and you find a violation, am I getting a fine at that point? Okay, so it's not unless I fix it, or if I don't fix it?
You can't hear you.
You can't hear you. We can't hear you.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to make sure that, like, if they find a violation, if I am getting fined at that time, or if I'm getting fined at a later point if I don't fix it.
Okay, so the way, the way the inspection process works is we go out to a home, we find a violation that is a danger to the people living in there. So we would create an inspection report, identify that item, we would send that item to the property manager who's registered on this electronically. It depends on, on the severity of that violation, would depend on how much time they get. If it's something minor, we may give them thirty days, right? We have some discretion in there. So if it's something that's immediate, then they may have seven days. They may have three days. It just depends on, but there's no immediate fine off the gate. They get, the property manager, whoever's registered on the, on the rent, on the rental registry, has an opportunity to fix it. The severity of the violation depends on the time limit. So if it's something major, I'm not going to give them thirty days for an open circuit that some kid can grab onto, right? So it just depends on the severity of it. So that's why the timelines are a little adjusted. Yes, there's no initial fines.
Okay, I just, I didn't know if that needed clarification the way that it read in section ten dash four oh eight, because I noticed in the previous section that we were going over, it kind of stated that, like, there's a certain fine at the first offense, or there's, I don't remember exactly how it read.
I'll echo what Mike said earlier about it's a lot easier to see the progress made. In my opinion, we might say, we might cite violations in the report, but, you know, there's, there's no, there's no violation until someone fails to act. That would be my opinion. That's where, because everyone can make mistakes. You know, I don't know how often you're in your rental properties. There's renters in there, it's, it's not your space to be in. If, if they don't report to you, you may not know about it. So there's, you know, my opinion would be there would not be a violation until someone failed to act, and that would be the, the key that I would see. You know, our goal's going to be to give that thirty days, that two weeks, that whatever it may be for the violation, and, you know, that would be your notification that something's wrong and needs fixed until the notification is either refused or something like that. That's one of the viol, you know, a finable offense would be. And also along the same lines, there's, you know, some similar things with the property maintenance ordinance about hardships and the building inspector has some authority to length of time. I could see some scenarios where the location may not be, fifteen, not livable and not safe for someone to live in, you know, we're probably going to want to see that nobody's living in it. And if nobody's living in it, you know, maybe there's, the amount of time can be adjusted based on that, obviously. We want people back in there as quick as possible, and, and we wouldn't want to alter that, but, you know, there's, there's, the, the true thing is, is we just want to make sure if people are living in there, they're living in a safe environment, it's not putting them at risk, and that, you know, if someone's working with us, they're not, not really violating anything.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you.
She raises a good point about the penalty language. I would say that it's not clear when I read it that, that the first thing that happens is they get a five hundred dollar fine.
Yeah, and that's not the intent, so you certainly don't want that to be the way it's construed.
And I just read the enforcement section above, and I see that there's language there that kind of makes it a little clearer, but it's not as clear as the penalty saying something more like what you are actually stating, Marcus, which is something to the effect of any violation of any provision of this code shall be subjected to the violating party, shall subject, shall subject the violating party to the fine. If they do not act upon being notified of it-
Yeah.
Or something like that.
I agree with that, Mr. President. Yeah, I mean, we could put something in there that any violation of a provision after appropriate notice has been provided, and yes, so we can definitely put something together that would make that more clear.
You know, I, I do notice that ten dash four oh seven says exactly what I said, but everything above it's also called a violation. You know, maybe it looks like a different word than violation elsewhere in the code above ten four oh seven.
To, to me, and I see the phrase violation notice up in ten four oh seven, so it's, yeah, the thirty calendar days of the violation notice or, you know, whatever the period of time is, but I, I do think that it makes sense to try to make that a little bit clearer.
I agree with that and will submit a new provision as amended.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Thompson.
Along the same lines, that penalty, the penalty also applies to people who own rental properties but failed to register, right?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, I-
I was just making sure that there wasn't a separate-
Yes, that would be this, that's the only penalty section that I, that I believe's in there.
Okay.
And again, this, you know, while that penalty is also vague, we do realize that this is something new and people may take some time to catch on. Our intent would not be the first time somebody has a property that's not registered to cause any issues with them, you know, their remedy might be registering your property. But in the event that we've had that situation and that conversation with someone, we find multiple others not registered at a later date, that's a different conversation.
Are we still on public comment or counsel?
Counsel.
Yeah. I don't know that I actually closed public comment, so-
Yeah.
I'd like to give anybody else a crack at it if, since I'm not clear on that, I'll just state it again. Is there anyone in the public who would like to offer a comment on general ordinance four, twenty twenty-five?
I'm impressed. Sounds like you guys are doing something about the rental problems with, is that something new?
Mr. Harland, can you-
I'm sorry.
Approach the microphone so that the people-
First of all, what, what do you do with the penalty money? Is it used to help solve some of these problems? Because I, I'm really, I had some rental property here in Terre Haute. I'm glad to hear that you're doing something about some of these rental properties that are in really bad shape and probably not up to code and things like that. You say this is basically new what you're doing? I'm impressed. That sounded really good. I know I didn't hear much, but I was impressed with what I heard. I stuck around here because I, I'm new to it. I, I like this. I like what's going on here. And it sounds like you guys are doing something really good.
I like these comments.
You can come to our meetings anytime.
I will. I'm coming next Thursday, or two, second Thursday.
Mr. Harland, you, you raise a, a good question about where the money will go. Marcus, would you like to field that one, please?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So the money would go to our engineering non-reverting account, and these funds help pay our staff that's going to be out doing this work. So we're pretty proud that we're able to take a lot of pressure off the general fund and operate more on a, a business-like nature to where, you know, in this case, those that are paying the fines are also paying for the people that are out doing the job.
Thank you.
Very good. Keep up the good work.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close public comment formally, and then we'll, now we'll formally open council discussion. I realize this has been a little more freewheeling than usual. I apologize for that.
It's talking with your phone going off.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah.
I never did the pledge to leave the music before.
Counselperson Dinkle.
Marcus, I want to thank you for bringing this. This is something that when I first joined council, I discussed that it's a priority that we need to. Roughly half of our community are renters, and I think we have a duty to protect them. I think the vast majority of the landlords in town are good actors, they only want the best, but as you mentioned, we have people from out of town that invest in properties, perhaps have never walked in them, and when there's a problem, we can't even track them down, and that's something we've heard, I know my colleagues have too, over and over and over again. I do like that it has, it's a balanced approach. There's a low fee, I mean, I've seen other communities charge a hundred dollars per unit. I'm glad that we're not trying to be punitive to people that are investing in making rental properties available. I appreciate the section about malice and false intent claims, because I think that's important. I don't own properties, but I know my colleagues do, and you can't prevent a tenant from making a false claim and then going through all this process. My question is, in that enforcement section that we were just discussing, it says there's thirty days from notice. Is that for any type of violation? I think the intent behind that, Councilman Dinkle, was more for notice of, you know, a substantive violation occurring inside of a rental residence, not notice of maybe the fact that you haven't registered your rental unit yet, so I think it would- But there, there's no real difference, I think, for severity, the way I'm reading it for- Right. Because I think, okay, somebody's shudder's falling off their home. I'm not too concerned with that. My concern is when we start talking about unsafe and uninhabitable structures. Thirty days seems reasonable on paper, but that, for somebody to be out of their home for thirty days, that's a burden on them, and I, I'm going to, I'm going to tell a personal story, so bear with me. Several years ago, as a renter, I was out of my home for twenty-five days. My electricity went out, and my landlord dragged their feet getting it fixed. And I was on the hook for over thousands and thousands of dollars that I had to pay for Airbnbs to have a place to live and still go to work. The only break I got was they didn't charge me rent for those twenty-five days I wasn't in my home. So if it can happen to me, it can happen to anybody. That was before I was a government official and knew things, but I felt helpless. I felt like I had no recourse. And those twenty-five days, I mean, I racked up a lot of money trying to find a place for my wife and I to live. So I, I'm just concerned with that thirty days. I, I would, I would almost like to see some lower threshold if we're talking about unsafe and uninhabitable. And if I heard Jason correctly earlier, I think the thirty days is more of a bookend for the maximum that he'd be looking at. If I understood him, I think it was more if, if there's some serious dangerous issue inside, that it might be you have to have this fixed within forty-eight hours or seventy-two hours, some, yeah.
Yeah, I can relate with that. So since these are rentals, all the repairs, depending on what it is, most repairs are going to require a contractor. So thirty days, some, a lot of our contractors, especially with this time of year, are extremely busy. So you can call them today, they may not get there for thirty days. But if, if they get a, a contract from a contractor and they bring it to us and say, if it's something minor, I agree with it, but if it's a major violation, they get less time. Public safety, this is the whole driver of this.
Sure.
So if something that's severe, they need to fix it quickly, they need to figure it out. If they got to go outside of our, our community to find a contractor, then so be it. If they spend more money, then so be it. These renters have, some of these renters have taken, they're getting paid, and they're not maintaining their property, so it got to this reason, it got this way for a reason. So they need to fix it. If it's something severe, they need to fix it quickly. Otherwise, they, they're going to have to find them under the rental or make, because most of our landlords and property managers, they have multiple properties they can manage, and they're not all full. They can move them temporarily, like in your instance, they could hopefully help them. And we work with a lot of these property managers now, and we, and when we find some of these today that are bad versus condemnable, we, you need to find them someplace else to go. We have one that happened this week that it was so bad- We have one that happened this week that it was so bad, we, they had to leave. And the property manager was a good property manager, and he found them a new location to go. It's, this is no different. It's exactly the same. It's just, this is registered. Luckily, we knew who that property manager was. If we didn't have this, if we didn't know who it was, my own course of action took a dimming.
So are you saying that there's language in other sections of code that reference the shorter window? I just, I'm trying to decide, I mean, should we amend that language within this ordinance, or is it already covered?
We define a major violation, which is an immediate threat to public safety. It's in our definition. So if we define it as a major violation, they have less time.
Okay.
It's defined, and we amended that at our code council meeting with Mayor Yur, I don't think you were, I don't think you were in there. So major, it's in 10-140 subsection D, major violation.
The other thing I would note is that, again, this parallels with the property maintenance ordinance. So the likely, we want all this in here to describe what we need, but the likely enforcement mechanism is probably going to be the property maintenance code. So in the event that we find a health, safety hazard, we have a lot more detail in what constitutes that in there. We needed enough in here to state we need these things, but the enforcement mechanism is likely the property maintenance ordinance.
There's a lot of scenarios. This was composed by all the information we've gathered from all of you guys and all of our citizens and complaints and landlords. We've had meetings. We're trying to help create an environment that makes us, in latitude, to do what's right and give us enough time where it's needed.
No, I think it's a very balanced approach. I think you guys really did a great job at common sense, not overburdening people, but still making sure that they're expectations. So I commend you for that.
I did mention that we did have an open house with THAR, and they invited a large group of property owners. And that was actually how we ended up with the malicious intent language, because that was something that they brought to us and said, what happens if people call once a week or five times a week or make things up? And, you know, to be honest, we see that. It does happen. You know, people can be disgruntled with their landlord for various reasons, and we get those calls. Usually, it's fairly obvious, you know, who's at fault, whether it's a, you know, you can generally tell the difference between a property that's not maintained in a safe manner versus one that's been trashed, I guess, by a tenant.
I, thank you.
Counselperson Thompson?
Um, I think I kind of get what AJ, or, sorry, what Dinkle was talking about. So I think probably this needs to actually reference the property maintenance code, even though we haven't passed it yet. Because it says state and city building code, unsafe building law, unsafe building ordinance. But I think perhaps under section 10-404, safe and habitable premises, I think if we reference the property maintenance code, because it's through the property maintenance code that you're defining how long they have to fix the problem. So as long as we reference the property maintenance code under section B, then the timelines then would be, it wouldn't be that 30 days. It would be whatever timeline has been given under the property maintenance code to fix the issue.
I would agree.
Okay.
Just didn't want to be too presumptuous.
I have a question about our recommendation from area planning. I think I know the answer to it, and the answer is probably because it's in chapter 10.
Same question.
But when I look at the letter from area planning, which is a favorable recommendation, it says, whereas, and it cites the Indiana Code, empowers the Area Plan Commission of Vigo County, Indiana, to hold hearings and make recommendations concerning ordinances for the zoning and districting of all lands within the incorporated or unincorporated areas of Vigo County. To me, this doesn't have anything to do with zoning or districting of land inside Vigo County. Am I off there?
They use the form that they use for every zoning ordinance, and they just didn't create a new one for a general ordinance.
So is there, I'm sorry.
So my question is, rather than just place this in the crowded chapter 10, does it make sense for this to be in something like this, whether it's this in particular or other things? We've had a similar observation on the proposed historic district review board. Why are we just putting these things in chapter 10? And not creating new sections of code or?
That's a great question.
Is it?
Well, most of our housing stuff from a violation ordinance standpoint, when it comes to maintenance, is in chapter 10. There comes the trash, weeds, grass, like that as well, so. Chapter four is registered contractor's license. Chapter seven's permitting. Six is right of ways and streets and stuff. I don't really know.
I think the key comes down, Council President Nation, to enforcement. You know, our, all of our, and I'm not saying that you couldn't go back and correct the issues I'm talking about here, but like, all of our departments are allowed to enforce chapter 10. Jason specifically is the only one allowed to enforce the new right-of-way section. So we just have a administrative system that has put a lot of the issues that we use for ordinance enforcement and property maintenance, wink, rank vegetation, we, it, we've looked at chapter 10 because we know all of our departments are authorized to enforce from chapter 10. But on something like this, at least with regards to the rental registration, I think, you know, that rental designation does have a different classification. You know, I mean, it's still residential, but the different classifications that you need for multi-unit rental registry, it just had that enough of a touching of land use that it felt like a trip to the advisory area plan commission was maybe not necessary, but wouldn't hurt anything. But in terms of creating a new chapter for the rental registration, I'm fine with that. The property maintenance code, I would want to make sure we're not hamstringing ourselves on enforcement. But on the rental registration, I have no qualms with that. And it's always done in conjunction with the clerk's office to try and put it where it makes sense, you know. So it, it, there is thought behind it, but I agree with the idea that chapter 10 has become very much a catch-all that we need to try and rectify.
I get that the enforcement part of it is a serious consideration.
Yeah.
But the code refers from one section to the other across, and can refer across sections. It's not a, that's not a big leap. Are, I guess another question is, are all additions or additions to or modifications of chapter 10 required to go before the area planning commission?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think any modification to chapter 10 would have to go before the area plan commission.
Sorry, excluding if we change our zoning classifications, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if we were doing something in the zoning land use realm, then I would envision it going, I mean, I think the way the area plan commission was set up to serve as an entity that, you know, does work for both city and county in an advisory role was meant to be geared as a sounding board for the public meetings that would ultimately come before the final decision makers for decision. And that, you know, because there are communities that give power to their commission. But obviously, in our situation, they're advisory, so that it probably has become more of a common practice to send stuff there for consult that maybe is unnecessary.
Thanks for entertaining those questions.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Mr. President, just for a point of clarification, there's a couple amendments that may be coming. Yes?
Yeah, no, I think-
So if you take no vote, it will just go till next week. Is that ample time for everyone?
Fine with us, yes.
So no action, no motions, no action. We just move on. Thank you, guys, and see you next week.
We'll do the same on this with the-
With the line-
Yeah, the lines.
Lines in, lines out, underline. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, next order of business, please, Michelle.
General Ordinance 6, 2025, amending city code, chapter eight, section 8-67, no parking zones, schedule N, creating no parking zone north side of Eighth Avenue from 16th Street to 230 feet east of 16th Street. You must vote to take action.
Do we have a petitioner on this one?
Where did Mr. Mauer go? I was contacted by someone. Who was I contacted by? I believe it was the school corporation that requested this.
Okay, okay. I'm familiar now. Let me bring it up on the map. This is up at, you said Eighth Avenue, right?
Yes, Eighth Avenue from 16th Street to 230 feet east of 16th Street.
So we'd had some concerns from school corporation about pickup and drop-off of kids, and we've been working with them in our office to to try to find a safer route to pick up and drop off kids. I actually really appreciate them working with us. We have a lot of pickup and drop-offs where they create a mess, and it's something that we look forward to, or kind of proposing doing a few more schools a year to give us the opportunity to create, not only is the place it's safe for the children, but minimize this traffic hazards outside of that, because, you know, I think we've all driven by a school or waited in line at a school in a place we weren't very comfortable waiting, or crossed the center line to get past a big line of cars, or, you know, seen those situations. So this is a goal to try to create a safer area for the kids and nearby motors.
Thank you, Marcus. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to ask a question about general ordinance number 6, 2025? Counsel?
Mr. President?
Counselperson Hinton?
I drove by there today, and it's, it is narrow. Folks would be parking in that area. And I think Board of Public Works just did something similar for St. Patrick's School. So what's the difference between these boards or Board of Public Works are coming here?
So the city code allows the Board of Public Works to remove parking on one side of a street that's less than 30 feet in width, both sides of the street less than 20 feet in width, or in a length up to 100 feet if it's determined to be an area of hazard, hazardous conditions. So there are, and there's two schedules in the city code. I think it's schedule N and schedule N-N. I might have my letters wrong, but it's either M or N. And the first one is the ones that are designated by city council, and then the second one is the ones that are designated by Board of Public Works and Safety.
I was just curious why one was misplaced, but it is very narrow. If you park on either side of the street, it's difficult to get through it if you're trying to pick up children.
And I think I remember years past, the school used to put out cones and remove them, but one person parked there that stays there all day can, can kind of mess up the whole plan and result in people waiting in line but swerving around some of this park or an issue like that.
And there are no, there's, like, there are no houses really for, if I'm remembering it correctly.
There's some houses on the south side, but on the north side, there's not, it's school property the full length.
Yes.
I U.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. President?
Counselman Azar?
There are no further questions. I move to take action on general ordinance 6.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselman Azar, seconded by Counselperson Hinton, that we take action on general ordinance number 6, 2025. All in favor of taking action? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We can take action.
President?
Counselman Azar?
I move that we approve general ordinance 6, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselman Azar, seconded by Counselperson Hinton, that we approve general ordinance number 6, 2025. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Thank you, Marcus. Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Special Ordinance 35, 2025, vacating a portion of an east-west public alley located at 1241 North 12th Street. No problems were noted.
All right, do we have a petitioner on special ordinance number 35? You're on, Steve. Welcome.
Steve McAllister with McAllister Brothers. We're just here to ask the council to consider doing this for us so we can relocate our business for the overpass.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to ask a question about general ordinance number 35, 2025? Counsel?
President?
Counselman Azar?
There are no questions. I move to take action on special ordinance 35.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselman Azar, seconded by Counselperson Boland, that we take action on special ordinance number 35, 2025. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we can take action.
President?
Counselman Azar?
I move that we approve special ordinance 35.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselman Azar, seconded by Counselperson Boland, that we take, that we approve special ordinance number 35, 2025. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Thank you, Steve. Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Resolution 18, 2025, transfer of $650 in the clerk's non-reverting document perpetuation budget.
Are you the petitioner, Michelle?
Unless I can convince someone else. This is my non-reverting fund that fees that I collect in the office by statute is allowed to go in there. And when we, when you passed the original budget for this non-reverting fund last year, I did not plan on purchasing as many laptops, so I need a little extra money in there, please. I think that's for the laptop one. Yes?
Thank you, Michelle. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to ask a question about resolution 18, 2025? Counsel? Counselperson Dinkle?
So is the $650 up for one laptop?
Yeah, no. It's, there was some money in there. This is to pay the rest.
Okay, I was going to say, if you got a deal, I need to talk to you because we're also replacing lots of laptops now, and I've not found them that cheap.
I do believe Mr. Wetnite will tell you that I had very specific requests on my laptops.
That I can imagine.
This is only a portion.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, I will move for approval of resolution 18, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselperson Dinkle, seconded by Counselperson Boland, that we approve resolution 18, 2025. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Resolution 19, 2025, transfer of $5,000 in the city clerk's budget.
That's you again.
So this fund is in my general fund money, and I am, because of some situations on not hiring a new employee this year for the remainder of the year, with all the changes coming up with Cor, the fund- coming up with court, the funds are being used to install some electrical, some HDMI, and other outlets so that I no longer have to run cables on the floor. And hopefully, it's going to be finished by next month, but they have to work around court, so they'll only get a few hours each day to work on it. But I'm very excited to lose the cables on the floor. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to ask a question about resolution nineteen, 2025? Counsel?
Mr. President?
Councilperson Hinton.
If no questions, I move that we adopt resolution nineteen, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Hinton, seconded by Councilperson Dinkle, that we adopt resolution number nineteen, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That passes.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome, Michelle. Next order of business, final order of business.
Resolution twenty-one, 2025, transfer of $67,500 in the cumulative capital development budget.
You're on, Marcus.
Thank you. So we are asking for this transfer to go to purchase of vehicles to go towards our electrical vehicle, electric vehicle purchase grant. This is 100% reimbursable. We purchased three electric vehicles for the city as a pilot program. The money needs to be there to cover the cost of them, and then we will submit all of our invoices and canceled payments and get a 100% reimbursement. So I guess we're transferring it, but just borrowing it for a little bit.
Did you get three EVs for $67,500?
We got three EVs for $117,000.
Okay. That sounds better. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to ask a question about resolution number twenty-one, 2025?
Probably some dominoes on.
Counsel?
Mr. President?
Councilperson Thompson.
Is there any concern that they might go and cancel the reimbursement grant at this point?
We had some concern about that initially. We actually got the grant a little while back. We followed through, did all of our checking to make sure it was good, and the minute we got the go-ahead and verification, then, then we moved, so I'm not concerned. We've, we've already checked, because we did have that same concern.
Okay. Nothing else?
It's a reasonable fear.
Yeah, it sure is.
Any other questions? Marcus, I'd just like to thank you and the administration for finally making this good idea a reality. This is something that you know from your attendance, from, from your role in, in the city engineering office, that I and some of my fellow council members have asked about for years. So it's good to see it finally happening. That said, entertain a motion.
Mr. President?
Councilperson Hinton.
I move to adopt resolution twenty-one, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Hinton, seconded by Councilperson Boland, that we adopt resolution number twenty-one, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes. Thank you, Marcus. Are there any announcements or anything that we need to communicate?
I have something.
Yes.
I noticed that Mr. Patel broke ground on New Hotel on Third Street near I-70, and it was, it came before the council several months ago, maybe a year ago, for tax abatement. And I'm excited that Mr. Patel moved forward with it, without tax abatement. And I think it'd benefit our, our city. I never thought it wouldn't, but I, I opposed the tax abatement, but I'm appreciative that he moved forward with that plan to build a hotel.
I noticed that too, and I'm also appreciative that that, that the market is delivering us a hotel and a place that is full of hotels without a tax abatement.
That's all.
Anybody else?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by George, by Councilman Azar, and seconded by everybody, that we adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. See you next week.